I hate to break up the fine fellowship, but the time is now 6:00 PM. Time to begin our meeting. Today is March 1st, 2016, and this is a regularly scheduled board meeting for the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. We'd like to welcome one and all. If you'd like to address the board during the comments and concerns sections, please pick up a card in the four-year area and give it to myself or Mr. Musgrove here, and we will consider it during that time on the agenda. Before we get started here this evening, we'd like everyone to stand for the invocation of the pledge, and I've asked Commissioner Wesley Wainwright to lead us in that today. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this day. And just, Lord, I want to take pause and thank you for your many blessings, and thank you for this opportunity that we have together. We thank you, Lord, for this great country that you've blessed and that we live in. We ask, Lord, that you would be with the leaders of this great nation, guide and direct them, Father, and that at the same opportunity, Lord, guide and direct us as we take care of business tonight. Lord, I'd like to take an opportunity to lift Commissioner Fleming up and his family and ask your blessings on them. His mother's been ill, and we ask, Lord, that you'll look over them in a special way. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wainwright, for leading us in that this evening. Once again, welcome to our meeting here this evening. We'll jump right into the agenda, the approval of the minutes from the February 16th, 2016, regularly scheduled board meeting, and the workshop February 18th, 2016. Gentlemen, are there any changes or corrections you'd like to see in these minutes? Hearing none, I just need a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to our proclamations and presentations area of the agenda, we have a presentation this evening from Swanee Valley Electric Cooperative. It's a presentation of property taxes, tax payments for 2015. At this time, we'd like to give our attention to Mr. Baynard Ward, manager of community relations. Mr. Ward, you have our attention.
Chairman Bouchal, fellow commissioners, thank you all for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you tonight. I'll be brief. I know you all have other things on the agenda to get to. As you know, Swanee Valley Electric provides over 18,000 members power throughout Swanee, Lafayette, Hamilton, and Columbia Counties. We really seek and strive to provide our members affordable, safe, and reliable electricity. And we're also one of the oldest cooperatives in the state, established in 1937. So we are proud to, proud to live and work in the, in the communities that we, that we serve. Although we're designated as a not-for-profit under Florida law, our members still pay their fair share in, in taxes. And it's not just property taxes, it's also dock stamps, gross receipts taxes, and sales taxes as well. And we, we really do strive to give back to our community, and one of the ways that we do that is we provide over 80 high-quality jobs in the areas that we serve, and many of those folks reside right here in Swanee County. So that's something that we're really proud of. In 2015, throughout our property, or throughout our service area, we paid a total of $1,152,722.29 in just property taxes. We know that those tax dollars stimulate our local economy and also strengthen the communities in which we serve. So it is my pleasure to present to you tonight the Swanee County portion of those tax dollars in the amount of $770,808.71.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. We appreciate everything that, the way that Swanee Valley works with us. We know that we're very, very fortunate to have a co-op owned by its members here and that we have a real opportunity to interact with yourself and all the employees down there, and they certainly go above and beyond to keep us in power. Some of the folks that I know, they work long hours, they work hard hours to keep your service area, which is our area here in Swanee County that bears its name, alive and well. So we're very thankful for that, and we're thankful for the presentation here this evening.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll mirror your comments, and Baynard, I'd appreciate if you, if you convey this to Mike and the rest of the group. There's very few opportunities that you see a group of professional people that carry out their duties to such a high degree. And throughout my farm, and my neighbors, and then all of us in my particular area that I, that I interact with, my neighbors and whatnot, we really appreciate those, those employees that y'all have that are out there on line construction and line maintenance. Those guys are just top-notch. They're very responsive. It's just amazing what they do, and I'm grateful, and I know that a lot of the citizens in the, in the community are very grateful.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Board members, we're gonna break here for a few minutes, and we're gonna take a picture with Mr. Ward. He has some, he has the check to present to us.
I thought you were gonna hand me the check.
I figured y'all probably already spent it.
We, we have some time-specific items tonight, so we have some time. So we're just gonna break here for a few minutes. You guys can chat amongst yourselves, and we're gonna take a picture. Send our love and greetings to your wife, Mr. Ward. We understand it's her birthday, so.
He's not listening.
I know it.
He's like talking.
So we were able to get him out of here, get him out of here early. All right. As noted, tried to, in order for me to catch time-specific items, you gotta put four or five of them on the agenda, so that's what we did here this evening. But having those, and the time is not 6:09 according to my clock, so we'll move on down to Commissioner items. I don't have any. Where are we? Consent? I thought we did consent already.
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Wait, 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 wait.
Aren't you ready? I'm sorry.
No, we, I did a favor to Mr. Ward. He, as I said, he has other, he's otherwise obligated, and I, I understand that, so we jumped down there to help him out. So moving back up to consent agenda, are there any items that anyone would like pulled this evening for individual consideration? Hearing none, I just need a motion for approval for items two through 11.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for keeping me on track. All right, moving down to Commissioner items. I don't have any additional items this evening unless there's any item that any commissioner would like to add. We can do so at this time.
I'd like to offer some comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead. We got time.
Well, I'd like to, I know we've, we've talked about it in the past, even previous commissions, and we've really never, I know it's, it's, it's not easy, and I know that's why we haven't gone back and tried to look at doing it, but I would really like to look at having at least once a quarter, have a meeting, one of our meetings in Branford. Correspondingly, I don't know, Commissioner Gamble may want to have one in Dallin Park, but I know there's been discussion of that in previous commissions, including this one. I was just reminded of it again the other night, the school board had met down at the elementary school in Branford, and, and a lot of the folks down there really would like to see that happen. And so I'd like to get y'all's thoughts on it, and if, and if agreeable, let staff, Jimmy's not here tonight, but, but let staff maybe take a look at trying to coordinate something, that we could begin that at the next quarter.
Okay. Well, we can do, I'm, I'm up for it at any time. I'll, I'll show up whenever, wherever. We can do it as soon as the next meeting if, if we want. It's just, it has to be, has to be up to the board.
I, I mean, I want to make sure we're prepared and then everything's okay. I mean, it's not like we gotta do it at the next meeting. It's just, I'd like to go ahead and start the process if, if y'all are agreeable. We're, at least once a quarter, we, we go to these different remote areas and try to represent our communities.
Well, you know, like I said, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I'll travel there. So if you, if you want, I mean, unless you just want to set definite dates here tonight, we can do that, or, or we can just schedule it.
How about I just, I'll just stop by the office one day this week or next week, and I mean, unless y'all want to contribute dates, I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me. I would think like, you know, maybe like the, you know, I don't have any thoughts as to exactly when, but I can sit down and try to look at it, and if.
Well, why don't you see if the, I guess where the school board met was in that caf- where was it they met in?
At the cafeteria at the elementary school.
Well, if we, if that site is available, then we can just meet there since they already know how to set it up and everything for it to occur.
I'll check on that and, and bring that information to administration.
Yeah, let staff know, and then we can do it. We could say maybe the first meeting of the middle, middle meeting on the, you know, in the quarter, there's three months, so it'd be like the second month in the quarter, the first meeting.
Yeah, we got April, May, and June coming up. I was just thinking somewhere in that window, we could, we could start then and, and just kind of get a regular schedule where, you know, we just kind of set it in motion, and that's what it would be unless there's an emergency, we could change it.
Well, we'll just, we'll figure it out. We'll let staff coordinate with the board members. We'll make it happen unless anybody has a problem with it. Anybody don't?
I know.
Nobody has a problem, so we're good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Once a quarter?
Once a quarter, yeah. We'll just do one meeting at, at another location.
I know, we, we've talked about it in the past, doing it once a quarter and bouncing around from Welburn to Branford to Dallin Park. I don't know if the board's still interested in that, but if, I would, I wouldn't mind doing it that way if, if that's the way.
Well, that, what I had in mind was each of those locations, if y'all wanted to, each quarter. In other words, so to be four meetings a year at Dallin Park, be four meetings a year in Branford, four meetings a year in Welburn if Commissioner Sessions so desired.
Wait, is there one, one meeting a year? Is it, if we have four quarters, you just do it once per quarter?
Once per quarter.
That would be four opportunities, right?
Of each location. In other words, go to Branford every quarter, go to Dallin Park every.
Oh, okay. That's a little more involved.
And if that's too much, I mean, that's, we need to go back and reevaluate.
Well, what I thought was once per quarter, you have four opportunities during the year to do it.
That's more what I was thinking, too, but I mean, I'm open for discussion on it.
How about I get with staff, if y'all will allow me?
Sure.
Because I don't know what all logistics are involved and what they've got to do to get ready for each meeting, especially with the clerk's office and all that. I just want to make, you know, we gotta make sure all that.
But I think if we're gonna do it on a regular basis, there'd need to be some stability there, like say the second month of the quarter.
That's what I'm saying. We'll specify a certain, right. We'll specify, you know, which meeting, you know, which month of that quarter, blah, blah, blah.
Right. I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to county attorney items, item number 18. We'll read it out. Discuss with possible board action, purchase of property located at 322 Pine Avenue. Mr. Privat, you have any comments on that?
Yes, sir, I do. At the last meeting, we, you authorized me to accept an offer to purchase the property on the Baker property, which is 322 Pine Avenue, and I had indicated at the last meeting that there was a glitch that was in the title work on the Baker property, and we would have to have all of their signatures to be able to, you know, proceed to purchase a property and to do whatever. Well, as a result of that, we've continued to have a glitch, and we've continued to have additional negotiations with the Baker family with regard to the 322 property. As a result of the negotiations, the county administrator and I are recommending at this point that we do not buy the Baker property and that it'd just be removed from consideration.
Okay. Gentlemen, if that's your wish, then I just need a motion to do that. It would include withdrawing from negotiations for that property.
Yeah, just to remove, we're, you really don't need to do anything else with it. I'm just informing you that we're not going to proceed, you know, because the negotiations were not finalized at the authorized price. And so I'm just informing you of that fact that we're not recommending that we buy the Baker property at this time.
Okay. All right.
No real action needing, needed.
All right.
However, I do have a second item.
Okay.
If you recall, back in several meetings ago, you also authorized us to go ahead and look, excuse me, I'll lean forward, go ahead and look at what is commonly known as the Mizels property, and authorized me to go ahead and have an appraisal done of the property. Well, this week I received the completed appraisal, and as a result, I've come to the board asking for authorization to go ahead and proceed with negotiations with the Snyder family with regard to the Mizel property.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the attorney? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board regarding the property known as the Mizels property, AKA the Snyder property?
Make a motion, we proceed with negotiations for the Mizel property.
Can I, also, while I'm thinking about it, if you're making the motion there, we proceed with the negotiations and that you allow, on behalf of the board, the county administrator to execute any option that may be necessary for the negotiations.
Okay.
In other words, what we, the process can be, we either have a negotiated contract that's all done, and I just bring the contract back to you, and you can approve the contract, or we can execute an option for a specific price, and then the option gets brought back, and it just depends on whether or not the contract can get done during that period of time. So I'd like to have the authorization of the county administrator to execute the option to hold it to y'all so that it can't, to hold that price until we can consider it here.
Okay. I hate to do this, but for clarity, could you, and would you withdraw your motion?
I would withdraw my motion.
All right. And then, please, Mr. Privat, restate what motion you're looking for so we can.
I'd like to have a motion to authorize the county attorney and the county administrator to negotiate with the Snyder family for the property known as the Mizels property, and I think the address is 320 Pine Avenue, and that the county administrator be authorized to execute an option on the property if the negotiations are fruitful.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you have anything else for us?
No, sir, not this evening.
All right. The time is now 6:20 still. We have about 10 minutes, so we'll move on to item number 19. If there is anything that Mr. Harris would like to update the board on with regard to the state's attorney's office, or anything thereof.
No, sir. And this will continue to be on your agenda for some time.
I, I know, but I'm, I was just asking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, we still have a little bit of time before 6:30. Guess we could, I don't have anybody who submitted a public comments card with the exception of Mr. Baker. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. I have no additional agenda items either. So I guess we'll just break here for about nine minutes until 6:30 PM. I'll call the meeting back. I'd like to bring this meeting back to order. The time is now 6:30. We're gonna move up on the agenda here, item number 17. At 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, we're gonna hold a public hearing to approve the final budget amendments for fiscal year 2014, 2015. At this time, we'll turn our attention to our chief deputy finance director, Mr. Ken Williams. Welcome up, Ken.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. This is just kind of a cleanup at the end of the year, end of fiscal year 15 to, there's four funds in the general fund, or in the county fund that need budget amendments because the revenues and expenditures exceeded the amounts. First is the state attorney fund. There was $3,607 of additional rent and operating expenses that were covered by existing funds within the fund. In the fire protection fund, they received a Division of Forestry grant of $5,156, but their budget increased by that amount. In the emergency management fund, they also received a grant of $10,900, which increased their budget by that amount. In the local housing ship apartment or fund, there was $66,625 additional down payment, assistance payments made, and that was covered by existing resources or fund balance in those funds. So we need a motion to approve the final budget amendments for the fiscal year 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any questions at the board to Mr. Williams? Hearing none, I just need a motion to approve the final budget amendments for fiscal year 2014 and 2015.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gamble, seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay.
Public hearing. Oh, yeah, you're right about that. Forgot about it. Let's come back, come back up to the podium. At this time, I'd like to.
I apologize. I'd stepped out of the room and didn't hear the beginning of it. I apologize.
Well, the reason, let me just say, the reason that I did that is because you were out of the room, and I knew we didn't, we didn't need you for that particular thing, but it just, it just goes to show it's, it's a group effort. Thank you, Mr. Carruthers, for bringing that to my attention. This time, I'd like to open public hearing on this matter, and if there is anyone offering testimony on this, please stand and be sworn.
Okay. Mr. Williams, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening and to tell the truth, so help you out?
I do.
Thank you.
We've already heard staff comment on this. There were no questions by the board, but we'll open a public comment at this time for anyone who wants to comment on this matter. Hearing none, we'll close, I'll close public comment at this time. Is there any further board discussion? There was none. The board did take action, and I'll close public hearing.
Open, let's back up, and now that you have it open, go ahead and vote again.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments for the 2014, 2015 budget year?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. On the, Mr. Privat, on the, the original thing that we did, do we need to withdraw that from the record at all?
No, you can let it go.
All right. Good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Moving back onto the agenda, let's see, let's pick one here. Time-specific items, item number 13, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, conduct a second public hearing to discuss with possible board action Swanee County's application for a community development block grant for economic development and railroad funding. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wants to offer, offer testimony, please stand and be sworn by the county attorney.
Okay. Mr. Fox, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening? Will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna start this by passing around a sign-in sheet. DEO requires these, so if you sign, sign it up. This is the second of two public hearings. We actually held a similar public hearing on this project several months ago. This is the rail spur project out at the Catalyst site, when we, as y'all recall, we submitted a waiver from the million-and-a-half-normal ceiling for the grant up to $3 million, which we received, and then we had the public hearing. We had three businesses that were involved at that time. The pellet manufacturing firm is no longer involved, so based upon the two businesses that are left, Clausner's committing to another 43 employees. Matco, the trans loading facility, which is going to be basically just west of the Clausner facility, is committing to nine additional employees, are relocating three employees from their facility over in Taylor County. With only 52 committed employees, we had to reduce the amount that's being requested from the original $3 million down to $1,819,948, and again, this will be for the rail spur. The Clausner's committing to put in another log yard and instruct the rail spur facilities on their site for an estimated $15 million. And Matcos is committing to relocate their facility to the site from their current facility over in Taylor County and, I was gonna say it's Columbia County, excuse me, and, and then put in their rail spur for an estimated $400,000, and there's still a gap of $1,363.039.03, which is based upon the engineer's estimate for the project and the funds we have available between CDBG and the FDOT road fund. Be glad to answer any questions at this point.
All right. Are there any questions by the commission to Mr. Fox? Hearing none, I'd like to open public comment at this time. Seeing no one, I'd like to close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Swanee County's application for a community development block grant for economic development for the railroad funding?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I'd like to close public hearing on this matter. Moving on to item number 14.
No, you've still got two other items to address.
Well, yeah, I was saying, there's a total of three actions we need to take, Mr. Chairman.
Well, hold on a second.
We just took care of item number one, or A.
A. I got you. All right. I'll prepare the top agenda better next time. Item number B, adoption of a resolution authorizing the implementation of long-term and short-term objective Swanee County Development Plan. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
What is the wish of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Gamble. Is there, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wainwright. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number C, adoption of a resolution authorizing the use of $1.363.039.03 million of Swanee County GAAP funding as, or funding as GAAP funding for small, for the small cities' economic development, community development block grant application. The county is submitting to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for federal fiscal year 2014. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, just because my mind was not, I wasn't paying attention. Did we close the public hearing after we made, we adopted A?
These are not three separate public hearings.
No, they need to be one, one full public hearing for all three particular items.
When we went over this prior to, it was just all, it was just all one.
All together.
It was all together.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not missing something here.
Now, now, we're getting feedback that we have to do them all three at the same time, so, you know, I was prepared to do just one, and then we were moving, now we're, now we've changed.
My understanding, and, and I'm just asking for clarity, was that all three particular items would be taken care of under one public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. What I was thinking was in, I thought that we closed public hearing as soon as we took care of item A, and then we corrected, oh, we gotta go back and do B and C without opening the public hearing again.
Well, I can re, you know, I can say reopen, I just thought it was assumed that we were gonna continue.
Okay.
I don't think we really, I don't think we really closed because as soon as he said that, then I said, whoa, 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 wait a minute.
Okay.
So, I mean, if somebody wants to argue about that technically.
That's all, I just want to make sure we didn't, something come back and say we didn't do it procedurally correct, and then we have problems with getting this thing turned in. My bad. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, in the backup, you guys see there's A, B, and C, and, and the way it was discussed previous was that it was all-inclusive, the approval was all-inclusive since it was included in your packet, so now, but upon further advisement by attorney, we're going back to do A, B, and C. So I guess we're on number C. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'll offer a motion of approval of the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, since we did that, Mr. Attorney, can we now close public hearing?
Now we can close.
On item number 13.
Now we can close it.
Thank you. Moving on, let's see, while we got, we got, let's see, I'll just, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Fox was done. All right, item number 14, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, to consider adoption of a resolution closing a portion of the south of 1,468 and a half feet of Colorado Avenue and Nevada Avenue, that portion of Myrtle Avenue, Palm Avenue, and Hickory Avenue lying between Nevada Avenue and Colorado Avenue, the 20-foot alley between blocks 66, 79, 80, and 93, all within the plat of Dowling Park. I'd like to, is this, this is not, yeah. This is not a public hearing.
Yes, it is, it is a public hearing.
So I'd like to open public hearing at this time, and we'll turn our, and anybody who wishes to speak to this matter, please stand and be sworn.
Ken, anybody else? Mr. Meeks, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening? Will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
We had an application requested for the closing of these roads lying within the plat of Dowling Park. Sometime in 2015, the board had previously closed the, the first 265 foot of Colorado and Nevada. The lots that are contained within this boundary of closure are all owned by one individual property owner, but at this time, the attorney would like to address them.
At this point, I spoke before the meeting to the representative of Ms. Poole with regard to this issue. The issue is whether or not, if you abandon these roads, whether or not these platted lots within a subdivision will have access to a public or private road. And it's kind of the reverse of what you do when you're plating a subdivision. When you're plating the subdivision, each of the subdivision lots have to have access to a public road. And as I understand it, the, the top portion that you see on the, the map up there, that's within the four, the first, the first four dots up there, that was property that was conveyed by Ms. Poole for the, I can't remember, the Dollar General or, which one was it?
Dollar General.
Dollar General store, you know, up there. And if that's the case, all of that lot, all of that being attached up there, the lots then, that would be within the subdivision, would not have access to a public or private road at this point. If we were to abandon the roads, the Nevada Avenue would then leave a gap of 30 feet to the west to the remainder of the subdivided lots going across there. So I'd like to take that into consideration. As I understand, Mr. Alcorn, all of the, the top part was...
I mean, I have some issues and stuff that I could give to the board.
Okay. We have this, then we have the one sketch.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if, Mr. Alcorn, if you're going to, other than answer my question, if you're going to give some testimony to the board, please be sworn.
Chairman, this is not on the agenda of public hearing. You know, this is a bad...
Yes, it was.
Item number 14, Mr. Ward.
It's on there.
Okay.
It was, I have the notice here where it was in the paper, but...
It's on, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet. It's item number 14.
Item number 14, Jim.
Yes, sir. Mr. Alcorn, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening? Will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. One of the questions that I have on your drawing then, is in the, the area that's in orange on the first scale, that was what was closed previously.
If you look at, if you look at the large, I've got the county order there where they were closed.
Right.
That was the county order.
My question then becomes then, the part that you have marked on the, the map that you submitted with the application, that the four corners of this dot right there, that was what was provided to...
It's conveyed to Dollar General.
Dollar General.
Correct.
Okay.
You're saying that the land would be landlocked. Ms. Poole actually owns 30 acres to the east of this.
Okay.
So it will not be landlocked because it will be, it will become contiguous with the property she already owns, which has access to, calendar 25.
The problem becomes that when you abandon the roads that are in there, there is not a, now, a dedicated public or private road that attaches subdivided lots. Just as if you went in to do a subdivision, you'd have to have a dedicated public or private road to be able to give you access to those lots. My suggestion would be that if, and I understand she owns all of it, it's all contiguous and everything like that. My suggestion would be that you would return with the request for abandonment of the roads, but then with a further request to partially vacate the plat, which would include blocks 93, 80, 79, and the few lots that are remaining in block 65.
66, 79, 80.
Is that 66? That's 66?
66.
Yes.
Okay, it looks like 65.
Table this issue or withdraw it and come back at a later meeting. You're saying vacate those blocks out of the plat.
Yes, sir. That way, everything would be, everything would be compliant.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. So if we could, you as the agent, then you'd need to ask us to...
Then I ask that we table this issue.
And we'll bring it back at another...
We amend the application and come back public sometime in April.
That'll be fine, thank you.
I got one quick question. It will, it will not require them to pay another $500 fee to come back.
No, sir, it's all part of the same application.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, same application.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Just for clarification, the, you know, we've opened public hearing, we're just going to table this until the next meeting, and then they will continue in, in a public hearing.
No, we'll close this public hearing, and then we can reopen it because it's still going to have to be read advertised.
Okay.
Okay. Be close if you got it in there tomorrow by noon? If you got it in there tomorrow by noon, you could get it advertised for next meeting.
All right. So we'll close public hearing on this matter at this time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meeks, you had a question?
Just, if it's, if it's road closure, the road closure requires two weeks publication rather than 10 days, so we may have to extend that a little bit.
Okay, well, he said he'd come back in, in April. That would make the April meeting, April 1st.
All right, moving on. Item number 15, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold second of two public hearings to consider adoption of ordinance for CPA 15-2, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the future land use plan map of the comprehensive plan by changing the land use agricultural from commercial highway interchange, agricultural one, to less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres, public and industrial to employment center, and approve transmittal to DEO. Like to open public hearing at this time, and anyone speaking to this matter, please stand and be sworn by the attorney.
Okay. Mr. Meeks, you're still under oath. Mr. Jackson, you swear or affirm the testimony you give to the board this evening? Will be the truth, so help you God. Thank you, sir.
Yes, over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris?
I was with you.
Okay, you were with me all the way there? I'm sorry.
I mean, yes, as well.
Okay.
All right, we'll turn our attention to Ron Meeks.
This is the second of the two required public hearings for the adoption of the proposed ordinance. We had previously held the transmittal hearing back in December. We did transmit the amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity, as well as all the other state reviewing agencies. We did receive some comments pertaining to the amendment. We've addressed those in the response verbally, as well as written communication that will be transmitted to the state after the proposed adoption. This amendment contains a boundary of 644 acres. The location you have on your vicinity map is US 90 and I-10 at that interchange. The lands being, the current land use being agricultural, one, industrial, commercial highway interchange, and public, and the proposed change would be going to a land use classification of employment center. As I previously stated, we had, we had transmitted the amendment, it's been through its review process, and we would, this would be the second of the public hearings requiring the adoption of the proposed ordinance that you have in your packets. At this time, I would enter the file into the record.
I'll take the file in as composite exhibit one.
Thinking of any, any questions of commissioners to the staff or the attorney? Hearing none, I'd like to open public comment at this time. Hearing none, I would like to close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board regarding this change and transmittal to DEO?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Sessions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I'd like to close public hearing on this matter. Moving on to item number 16, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold second of two public hearings to consider adoption of an ordinance for CPA 15-13, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the future land use plan map of the comprehensive plan by changing the land use classification from recreational environmentally sensitive, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per 10 acres, agricultural, one, less than one or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres, to employment center, and approve transmittal to DEO. Like to open public hearing at this time, and anyone wanting to speak to this matter, please stand and be sworn.
Is there anybody that has not been sworn that may address this matter? Okay, raise your hand, thank you very much. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you give before the board this evening? Will be the truth, so help you God. Thank you. All the rest of you, oath carries over.
Turn our attention to Ron Meeks, planning and zoning director.
Again, Mr. Chairman, board members, this would be the second of the required two public hearings for the adoption of this proposed ordinance. This application, as well as the previous application, was transmitted to the state as one submittal request, so the comments reflect on both applications. We did have comments regarding this application. We have responded accordingly verbally, as well as written communication with those agencies, and the ordinance is prepared for adoption. The current land use, as we had previously stated, is agricultural, one, environmentally sensitive, two, and recreational, and the proposed would be for the employment center. The total acreage and the size of this amendment is 753.5 acres, and you have, with your packet of information, the proposed ordinance, it would be considered, as well as the approval for the transmittal of the amendment. At this time, I would enter this file into the record as part of the request.
It will take in the application and the remainder of the file as composite exhibit number one.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Mr. Meeks, are there any questions of staff by the board? Hearing none, I'd like to open public comment at this time. Seeing none coming forward, I'd like to close public comment. Is there any further board, board discussion? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to adopt.
Ordinance CPA 15-13.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. I'd like to close public hearing at this time. All right, we've already been through item number 17. Gentlemen, number 18 has been discussed. Number 19, we've made it through there. Item number 20, we had no additional agenda items. Now we're to public comments and concerns. I had no public comments and concerns cards filled out unless someone would like to address the board at this time. Seeing none, administrators' comments and information. Do you have anything for the board this evening?
None.
Board members, inquiries, requests, and comments. We'll start at the other end. Commissioner Fleming, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Sessions?
I have nothing this time.
Commissioner Wainwright?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gamble?
No, sir.
All right. The only thing that I have to bring to you is the greetings from the Kiwanis Club. I had the opportunity to speak to them, and they asked me to bring those back to the board here this evening. Other than that, unless there's any further discussion, I just need one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I could bring it up with the board to do a, a rafting...